Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held here on January 9th, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to call the meeting to order. Second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Item three is public comments. Has no one signed up tonight? All right. Item four is superintendent's recognition. Will the members, could we please go in front of the dais? Item A is Board Recognition Month. Ms. Parks.
Hi. We are proud as a district to join over 1,000 districts across Texas to celebrate January as School Board Recognition Month. And this year, TASB has selected the theme, "Locally Elected, Community Connected." Board service is a volunteer effort, accepted by only a few in our community. It's a tough job with no salary. It's critically important, the responsibility, the time it takes, a mature outlook, and careful decision-making, all of which you do with such ease and in such a magnificent way. On behalf of Temple ISD, we thank you for caring for our children, our families, and our staff and our community. And at your places tonight, you had goodies from all over the district, from our campuses, different departments, as they wanted to show how much they appreciate you as well. And we aren't, well, I guess we are in the business of comparing. But regardless, we have and are so grateful to have each of you as part of our leadership team who leads this district through good times and in bad. And this last year has not been one of the best when it comes to things that are far beyond our control, politically and economically. But again, you guys have led with courage and grace and a commitment to our students above all else. And truly, truly, we just commend you for the way that you take care of our district, our staff, our students, and this community. And we are so lucky to have you. So happy School Board Appreciation Month.
First, just want to say thank y'all for all the lovely gifts that y'all have provided to us. We look, I know I personally, I think other board members too, look forward to this time of the year. It is so nice. And especially appreciate Carl for the cupcake. That is very tempting here right before supper. I may have a little dessert before supper.
They were like kids at Christmas over there looking in their little baskets. It was so cute.
But this, you know, to me, this is giving back to the community. This is the school district I grew up in, graduated from. It's a labor of love. My son graduated from here a couple of years ago. This is something I know I do because it's a passion. And but I appreciate everybody's support here and in the community. This is such an important, it really is an important job, especially nowadays, for public board members to stand up and represent their districts. So again, thank y'all for everything and thank y'all for all your support.
Well, I will definitely say something. All the things that Christine said, I mean, they're all true. This is a, this is a board that people want to be part of. I mean, you have our principals here today, of course, our leadership team. You know, the community gravitates to you. You literally check every box. You've won so many accolades and you're, you know, very well-known in the community. But I think the thing that really separates this board, not just as individual members, but collectively, from many other boards, and I'm not just talking school districts, but others, is the one box they check that I think is the most important is they truly serve for the right reason. I mean, truly serve for the right reason. And that is to put our students and staff in the very best positions to be successful. There's not one program they favor. There's not one type of student they favor. They favor all students. They favor everybody, all 1,400 employees, no matter what they do. So thank you so much for your guidance, for the both professional and personal relationships that we have, the fun that you bring to a boring superintendent. Yeah, fun. And putting, not anymore, thanks. Yeah, there you go. And putting up with the late night phone calls and, you know, just all the hard decisions and everything else. But man, the rewards that have taken place over the last several years and just the exciting things to come. And I can't think of a better team to be leading it than this group of board members here. So thank you so much and we hope you continue to serve.
Anybody else? I should say anything?
I just wanted to express my appreciation to you guys. We wouldn't need a board if it wasn't for you guys and what y'all do for all of our kids, how you take care of our kids and love the kids here in Temple. And that's why we're here, to make sure you have what you need for the kids. So again, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'll just add, we've come a long way as a district and we shine as bright as you help us shine because we do this together. This is not just us up here, isolated on an island. We succeed and do the things that we do because you were out there in the trenches doing the hard work with our teachers and loving all of our babies. And that helps us be able to do what we need to do. So thank you all.
It's just an honor to serve you all and to represent the community. And Bobby mentioned the rewards. And it's just, it's just the pride I feel when I hear about the amazing things that you all do in the classrooms and on the courts and everywhere that you work. It's just, it just makes me so proud, proud of our students and proud of our staff. So thank you.
I think I would say it doesn't have anything to do with us. It's all about you guys, every single bit of it, about you guys and about the students. And so we are so blessed to be here. We're blessed to serve. We're blessed to listen to you when you need to be listened to. So if you ever need to be listened to, we're here for that. So I have never in my life, I've been a member of a lot of boards and still am, but this is the first time that I've been a member of a board where I feel like we're truly a family, but not one of the ones where we fight against each other all the time. It's one of those that where you like to go. And so, and you know, everyone's right. You know, we all are up here for, it's all in our heart. It's our passion to take care of you guys. And thank you very much for what you guys do.
I would just like to say that I am truly happy to be on the board. It's all about service. It's all about caring for our students and our faculty and staff. And that's including everyone, from the cafeteria to the maintenance, to the teachers, to everyone. And we just love you guys and whatever we can do to help, my heart goes out to you. Thank you.
I'm just grateful to have this opportunity. I love serving with this team. They're fun and I think they're just all great. And I love this opportunity to serve you all and to serve our children, the children in the community. Thank you.
Again, thank y'all very much for this honor.
Eric, did you get pictures? Yeah, let's just do a group picture real quick just so we can have an updated one, if you don't mind. I didn't, no, I'm sorry. I'll Photoshop. It'll be fine.
Item B is Quest Bridge Match Program. Temple High School Junior Edgar Salavar, Boston University.
Temple High School Senior, right? Senior Edgar Salavar is one of just over 2,000 students from across the country to receive a full four-year college scholarship through the 2023 Quest Bridge National College Match Program. Edgar will be attending Boston University on a full scholarship beginning this fall. He was accepted into, yeah. He was accepted into the Quest Bridge College Prep Scholars Program last year with more than 20,000 other applicants. And out of those, 2,242 matched with schools to become match scholarship recipients. Edgar is currently ranked in the top 10 of his class at Temple High School and participates in the International Baccalaureate Program. He will graduate from Temple High School at 16. Is that right? Oh goodness, and will be the first-generation college student in his family. He plans to major in mechanical engineering at Boston University. And the strength of BU's program and the internship opportunities helped attract him to the school, along with an agreement between the two schools that will also provide the opportunity for him to take courses at MIT. Edgar, on behalf of Temple ISD, we are truly so proud of you and we cannot wait to see and watch what you do in the future. Congratulations truly on this extraordinary accomplishment.
Well, we've given out a few of these medals, but I'll tell you, this is probably the most impressive award that we have handed, or a medal that I've handed for this student. This is truly remarkable what he's accomplished. We are so proud of you. I wish you could stick around another two. There's plenty more records for you to break and everything else. But just continue to represent us well like you already have. The things that you have done at this point to get you here, I would say we absolutely continue your success. I do want you to introduce your support system that you have here today. And we know it's a team sport, so would you all like to be in the picture?
Yes.
Yes, come on, mom. Come on. Stay in touch and let us know.
All right. Item C, the Buy Board Rebate Check Presentation. Mr. Boyd.
We're actually going to have you guys come forward. We are really thrilled tonight to welcome Adrian Porras and Melanie Simon Telly, who are Buy Board Representatives this evening, along with the gift that they are presenting us tonight. BuyBoard.com is a purchasing cooperative established by the Texas Association of School Boards that allows school districts and other governmental entities to purchase equipment and supplies at competitive prices from vendors that have already been vetted by the organization. The goal of Buy Board is to increase purchasing power, streamline the procurement process, and reduce administrative costs through an online system. Temple ISD's $95,199 rebate check is the result of equipment and supplies purchased through the program by Temple ISD during the last fiscal year. And it's the highest rebate check the district has received in the last eight years. During that period, Temple ISD has received a total of $476,000 in rebates from Buy Board. This is just another example of Temple ISD's commitment to our community and taxpayers to be responsible fiscal stewards. And we thank Buy Board for being here and for this presentation this evening. Thank you. Ooh, well, add that. Yes.
We always be.
Yes, absolutely. Picture, and then there's the microphone if you wanted to say something too as well. I'm sorry.
Well, you know, our main goal is to make sure that we help you guys run smoothly and make life easier for school districts from the bottom or the top down. So we're always proud to, you know, this is one of our funnest activities that we get to do is come out and present rebates to everybody. We rebated back $10.8 million back to our members this year. Since 2006, we've rebated back over $100 million. So if y'all know TASB, our main goal is to help you guys in public education. This is just a small part of what we are able to do for you guys. And so it's always, I always like coming out here. It's seeing you all and presenting the check to you guys. So thank you.
Item five is executive hires. Do you have none? Okay. Item six is the Board Presence Report. Eight items, future items discussion. Members, is there any items that y'all wish to discuss at future board meeting? At this point, each member should have a blue folder at their desk. This is the time of year that we have our annual evaluation of Dr. Ott. So inside of here is his evaluation and a blank evaluation. If you could, have those returned to me or Monica by Tuesday, January 23rd. That's just two weeks from now. And if there's anything you need to discuss or extra time, just please give me a call or Monica a call. So and also Monica will be emailing the same thing electronically too, in case you want it that way. Okay. Item B is consideration approval for mascot naming at Sampson Howard Elementary. Dr. Ott.
Okay, well, we are opening a new elementary school in August of 2024. And we, we received a fantastic idea via email. Would you please stand up, Mrs. Hendy? From Mrs. Hendy and would her lovely mother stand up as well? Her mother is actually a teacher. In fact, would the Kater Cougars stand up altogether? And grandpa, could you stand up, grandpa? There you go. So initially, we had discussed the idea of opening the school without a mascot and allowing the first student body to, through a survey or poll of some sort, to select the mascot. You can do that at the elementary level. Secondary, you need to open a school with a mascot for lots of reasons, competitive reasons. But elementary, that was something we had thought about. As the, the numbers have been run through the demographic study, it is, you know, at a point where it's no longer 95% that Kater will end up not being in elementary school for the 24, 25 school year and beyond. So I talked to the staff about that. And then we received, I received an email over the Christmas break, I think, or maybe right when we came, it was right when we came back. And the suggestion was, hey, you know, in order to honor the past, but also move forward with the new, what about considering the Cougar, the mascot, as the mascot of Sampson Howard Elementary? The email had three pieces in it. Can we move the bricks over there? They have the student names. And we're going to wait on that answer. The second was, can we carry the school colors of green and yellow over? The school colors were decided several months ago. They're blue and yellow, so we accidentally got it half-right. And then the last was the mascot. And so today, we want to bring to you, board, for consideration the mascot naming of Sampson Howard Elementary to be the Cougars.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. There any comments, members?
I just think that carrying the new mascot, carrying the mascot to the new campus is such a thoughtful way to honor the legacy of the current and past students and staff. And I'm very grateful that the idea was brought to us. So thank you.
Mr. Gaines? Yep, okay, okay. Anybody else? This is an action item.
Well, since it's an action item, I'd like to make the motion that we approve for the mascot naming of Sampson Howard Elementary to be the Sampson Howard Cougars.
Motion made by Ms. Gallin. Is there a second?
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. The ayes have it. We have a new mascot. Congratulations.
Board members, I'd ask if you could just excuse me for one second. This is the actual mascot, by the way. So he showed up and we appreciate enough Chick-fil-A gift cards convinced him to be here today. And we waited in there for a solid 30 minutes or so. And Kater staff, if you would like to come up as well.
Let's do one with us and then we'll do one with the Kater staff.
Make sure, now his mom is here too. Where is Ms.?
Hey, where's Ms. Jeff?
Yes. We don't want to accent with the new mascots.
Here, I'm going to walk you back here.
Yeah.
I just want to thank the Kater staff for bringing this forward. I mean, this was an idea, I guess, last Thursday morning. You received the email?
I think it was Thursday at 8:00.
And next thing you know, it's on our agenda and we approved it. That's truly grassroots and it's such a good idea. It is such a good, and that's a beautiful Sampson Howard Elementary. That is just so nice. All right. Item C is the Trustee Advocates Program Acceptance. Is this an action item, Dr. Ott? Or do we just have to note it? I know we have the, the signatures page where we're all signed, I believe. If it hadn't, if everybody hadn't signed it yet, it's right there. Do we need to formally?
Yes, yeah, it says here. You have to prove it.
Have to prove it, okay. So we were accepted as one of eight, I believe? Nine, as across Texas, our school board to be a part of the advocacy program for the Texas Association of School Boards. It's a great honor to work with that organization. And I think we do have a lot to offer for this program and for advocacy down in Austin. This does require a motion to approve?
A motion?
Motion by Mrs. Cook.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you. Item seven is consent items. Items A through F1. Oh, I'm sorry, important dates, yes. I apologize.
And board members, I just have a few. This next Monday is Martin Luther King. Well, first of all, it's Student and Staff Holiday. And it's also Martin Luther King Junior Day. And there's actually a program, and it's at 4:00 PM at the Corinth Missionary Baptist Church on South 10th that Monday. And I'm actually on the program and would love for you to attend if you have a chance to be there to celebrate. And then, of course, we have our Policy Committee meeting in June or January 24th. And then January 25th is our Facilities Committee meeting. And that is going to be out at, at the Sampson Howard site. Okay. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is consent items, items A through F1. Ms. Suarez will have to, will excuse herself from item E. So what is the pleasure of the board to deal with items A through D and F1? Is there a motion to hear those together?
I'll make a motion if you see.
I make a motion to view seven, eight through, um, D and E F, F one altogether.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines, second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. With abstention by Ms. Suarez, the items pass. Item E, the twenty twenty-four Joint Interlocal Election Agreement. Is there a motion to pass?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Gallin.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, abstention by Ms. Suarez, items pass. And I just want to correct myself, you didn't abstain from the first one. That's my fault. Yeah, I was jumping ahead of myself. Okay. All right. Item eight, action items. A, Human Resources, Dr. Ward, no items. B, Academics, Dr. Adams, no items. C, Facilities and Operations, Mr. Boyd, no items. D, Finance, Mrs. Stanford, no items. E, Student Services, Mr. Hagenberg, no items either. F, Board Committee Reports, there was no Facility Committee meeting in December. Uh, so the next, uh, committee meeting is Thursday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at four P M. And also no Policy Committee meeting in December, but the next meeting is Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at four P M. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.